Until we officially open the meeting. Thanks. All right. The major item tonight is to open a public hearing for the residents of Carriage Pines, LLC, 237 Dodge Road, for the approval -- request for approval of a site plan and special permit. Prior to that, I just wanted to recognize that -- are there abutters here?
Yes.
And because that -- just to give you some guidelines that when we talk, that -- just to give you kind of some first hearing so that the applicants will have a chance to basically present, you know, the entire project, an overview. We'll have some meetings that may address drainage, maybe the next meeting, and I'll be, you know, talking to you, and we'll focus on it. I don't want to ramble all over the place. We're not gonna -- we're not gonna solve this all tonight. So I think we need to -- so be respectful. So when you do speak, please, you know, keep your address and your name. And I just wanted to -- well, I guess I should open the hearing. Does anybody here on the board have any conflict of interest?
Okay.
Yeah. No? Okay. All right. So I will read the legal notice, which was advertised in the Newburyport Daily News on Wednesday, April 11th, and Wednesday, April 18th. So I'll read the legal notice that was published for two consecutive weeks. The abutters were also notified. Did you get it? Okay. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, the Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw and Raleigh Planning Board Rules and Regulations, the Raleigh Planning Board will conduct a public hearing Wednesday, April 25th, 2012, at 7:30 PM in the conference room, the Town Hall Annex 39, Central Street, Raleigh, Mass. Relative to applications for approval of a site plan and special permit, the applicant is the residents of Carriage Pines, LLC, 191 South Main Street, Middleton, Mass., 01949. The owner of the property is Windover Properties, LLC. The application is for approval of a site plan on approximately 89.7 acres at the Raleigh Country Club, 237 Dodge Road, Raleigh, Mass. The project proposes construction of 40 residential units and continued operation of a nine-hole public golf course, pro shop and various other structures attendant to the operation of a golf course. Applicant is proposing up to 12 two-bedroom duplex-style townhouses and at least 16 two- or three-bedroom, single-family, one- or two-story dwellings. In addition, the applicant is seeking approval for a special permit under Raleigh Protective Zoning Bylaw, Section 78, in accordance with Section 64 Open Space Residential Subdivision, otherwise known as an OSRD, and satisfactorily open space requirement of Section 6.4.8.6. Further information or review of the application and the entire packets and plans are available and all the related documents. Contact the planning board office, (978) 948-5549, at Town Hall Annex, this building, during regular business hours. Just as a note, as an aside, the hearing's open. As an aside, I'm not sure whether we have someone in regular office hours, even though it says that. So anyone in the office who is there can help out, or if you contact the selectmen, they'll contact me, and I'll make arrangements, certainly even to get you copies of the materials. If you don't live that far away, I'd be glad to drop them off, so. And they have been kind. The applicants have provided enough for interested parties to review them. Please state who you are and do your thing.
Right.
Oh, I did. I said a public hearing. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Entertainer motion to open the vote. Karen, thanks.
I'm moved to open the public hearing.
Second. Second by Dave Jake. Moved by Clifford Pierce. All those are famous.
Hi. Good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of the applicant, the residents of Carriage -- and Rich Williams from Williamson Sprawders, the site design engineer. As stated in the legal notice, this particular application is to seek approval of an OSRD located on the 237 Dodge Street. The property consists of 89 acres and is presently used as a nine-hole golf course. It's also approved by a restaurant function facility that's two stories, as well as clubhouse and other accessory structures necessary for the operation of a golf course, including a driving range. Our proposal involves using the golf course in a modified state as the open space under the OSRD or Section 6.4. Under Section 6.4, you're permitted to use the open -- as open space, the golf course, provided you are able to provide at least 70% open space via that golf course. And in fact, I'm gonna set up the site plan of the entire parcel, which I just kinda left to prepare. So this shows the entire 89-acre parcel. Parcel B represents the golf course. Parcel A represents the -- I don't know if you wanna try -- Parcel A represents the residential subdivision. So the proposal essentially to subdivide in order to separate the open space from the residential subdivision. As I had said, the open space parcel does consist of 85% of the total landmass. It's 76 acres, and the residential portion is only 12 acres. In accordance with the requirements for demonstrating compliance with the intent of the open space provisions, we need to show that we aren't trying to put more homes in the portion that's residential than we are entitled to do under a typical residential landscape or, I should say, not landscape plan, but traditional landscape, I mean residential subdivision. And in order to support our position that you could in fact put at least 40, we have submitted to this board a copy of that yield plan from the previous OSRD that was approved for this particular site that actually did a concept plan, and that concept plan yielded the possibility of putting in 45 units. In addition to that, under the OSRD requirements, there's some formula. So you have to do both. You have to see what the formula yields and what the yield plan results are. And under the formula, you actually could've put 54 units. So you're required to look at whether it's the lesser, and the lesser ends up being 45. We only have 40 units, so we do comply with that density requirement because we have less. One of the other issues, or I should say controls, with regard to the open space is that you try to make sure that you don't overburden the open space with wetlands versus the open space as far as the residential subdivision goes. However, with regard to a golf course, clearly you have a lot of open space that is going to have water features because that's inherent in the golf course. That's part of the -- that's part of actually the plan, design of a golf course. So most of the wetlands are located within the OSRD. However, even if we were to completely extract all of the wetland, we still have 75% open space. So really, we may not honor the actual minute requirement of having if equal amounts of wetland on each. We do honor the intent, which is to make sure we don't short an open space parcel or overburden it with wetlands in order to create more upland in the residential area. We do it truly because we wanna maintain the integrity of the golf course. For example, what we are doing, we are having some changes to the golf course. For a lot of you who've been out there, what we're doing is we're relocating the tee, the seventh tee and the eighth green. I always get them mixed up. It's the other way around.
Seventh green and eighth tee.
Seventh green, eighth tee. It all means the same to me. You shouldn't say that, but it does. So we had to do some relocating of that, but we worked with, you know, a golf course who designed -- who knows how to design golf courses to make sure that that wasn't going to impair the integrity. In addition to that, we did eliminate the driving range, and the restaurant no longer will be a part of the particular use. So no longer will there be that function restaurant facility. However, the clubhouse that is there presently will remain, and as detailed in our application, will actually be renovated somewhat. And then we are going to replace the septic system for that. It'll have its own septic system, its own lot, so it's gonna have its own facilities. So that's just kind of a brief overview of what's going to happen with regard to the golf course. It will have its own separate entrance. So as you can see from the plan, what you'll do is you'll still come in essentially in the same location as you had before in the area where the parking lot is, and the parking lot's going to remain in its present location as well. Again, there'll be some refurbishments made, and that'll be -- that'll be the manner in which you access the property. There is a requirement under the OSRD that you provide sign renderings to show exactly what the signs are gonna be, because everybody wants to make sure this is gonna still maintain somewhat of a rural neighborhood appeal. And I did include those in your packages, and I show a very small granite post carved wood sign for the entrance for the golf course. Now, the entrance for the residential portion is located right here, which is probably about 50 feet away from where the existing entrance is, but pretty far away from where the proposed entrance is going to be. And you can see where you'll enter and actually circulate going to the residential portion. In addition, there is going to be a sign saying, okay, this is the residents of Carriage Pines. And again, I included that in your package just to show you what the style would be, and it's a requirement. So essentially, I think it was described when you spoke about what your legal requirement, your legal description was in your legal ad. We do have 40 units. What we had tried to do is make a real blend, and we had met with the abutters, and I -- we had revealed that to -- and I believe I recognized a couple of people too from that abutters meeting. And what they said was they kind of liked the idea of having a mix, because what we have is a mix of single-family as well as duplex. We have a mix of single-story and two-story single-family homes as well. And I think that really, people like that a lot. And what we had actually done is in this area, there had been duplexes on the old plan, you know, you said size separation. But when we had spoken with an abutter who was in this area, they asked us if we would possibly change and maybe put in a single-family home instead of a duplex, and we had done that. And we actually relocated some of those homes to accommodate the request of our most proximate abutter. And by the way, you can see how what B does skirt around, so we're the -- so we did provide the buffer so that the residential area wasn't smack dab against the law. And in addition to that, we have designed a septic system that can service, a shared septic system that can service all of the units. And again, we do need to continue to do some more perk tests on the property, and we're actually, I think we have it scheduled already even, or in the process of doing so.
We do. Only, and I'll go through it in my presentation, but...
Yeah, please. You speak. You need to say who you are.
Rich Williams from Williamson Sprawders. Sorry. We have all the testing that we need in the active system, but there's a reserve system that will be doing some testing in. It's a requirement that you have testing in that part of it. We've got testing all over the place, so we're confident that we're gonna be okay there, but it's a kind of a formality.
So basically, that's a general overview. What you did also see in your packages, we paid very close attention to what the requirements, the little requirements are. We did supply you with the environmental impact statement and a breakdown from the traffic report that had been delivered to you in 2006, which basically details the differences between the two proposals in the current state. So we're showing you basically its existing condition, and then what kind of an impact it would have to have the golf course and a 40-unit residential subdivision versus the golf course with a 77-seat restaurant. And that's included in your package as well. What we did do is provide, we had some -- I'm gonna put this down, Rich, you probably is gonna go through this with you in more detail and go through some of the more detailed plans with regard to the engineering. But I wanted to just show you what we had done, because we asked the landscape architect to provide us with a broad overview of the entire site, showing you the landscaping. And this is basically the entire, only the residential site. So you can see how we've landscaped around all of the individual buildings and how we have tried to maintain a tree buffer when it comes to providing some protection between the existing residences and our proposed subdivision. And then just because I recognize the fact that sometimes it's a little bit difficult to see it on that small a scale, that we did provide you with a breakdown of the landscaping for the entrance and how we were going to have people come in and enter, as well as the individual landscaping features around each of the units. We also provided...
Could you put that up?
Oh, most certainly. Would you want me to bring it closer so you can...
No, just put it up there. Nate might...
Oh, for the -- I'm sorry. There you go. And we do have lights located at successive intervals, and did include a cut sheet for you so that you could see the style of light and also, you know, the breakup lights before the metrics started. And that's this one. Also, we have various styles of homes. And I think last time we met, when we met with the abutters, we didn't have all of the architectural, but now we have actual renderings to show you the various style of homes. So here you have obviously the single-family, single-story, and more single-family, single-story. Here you have the duplex, two-story. And here is the single-family. It's not gonna be a little bit of -- probably not. Single-family, two-story.
Can you give us an idea of the size, square footage of these homes?
Well, they're about, well, they're, I mean, obviously, single story's two-story, 2,000.
Yeah, in the 2,000. Even the single families, isn't it?
It's about 2,000, and then when you hit, when you get upstairs, I think it's like 2,800.
Yeah.
I do have a plan in there that I can actually refer to.
When you mean for the two stories, it's 2,800?
I think it's about that.
Yeah, it's not a full second story. There's a loft.
It's like a loft. I'm just gonna grab the plan.
So 2,000 for the single floor, then 2,800 for the...
Yeah, roughly. And we'll...
That might sound okay.
Terrify that.
I think I actually have the war plans, that's why. I think I'll confirm for you, but that's the approximate. They don't quite hit 2,000. I think the largest is like 2,800. But I can confirm that. I think all of them, by the way, are two-car garage, so that people will be able to park on the inside. And then everybody does have their own driveway that allows them to park two cars in the driveway. So each resident would have basically the ability, there you go, I knew I had included it. Each resident will be able to park four cars on their own unit. And we also have within the property 23 visitor parking spaces. So we have a total of 183 parking spaces available. And then this is just another example of, I think this is still the single story, it's just a loft, right, Rich? This one?
Yes.
This is a single, this is basically an architectural feature. And then I did ask the developer to give me an example of what type of fencing you would put up so that I could show that it blended well with the country appeal. So this would be the fencing that would be used in any area in which is designated on the site plan to have fencing.
Is that vinyl?
I believe it is. Yeah, I believe it's all, what is it called, from the, you know, maintenance room?
Yes.
It's all maintenance room.
PVC.
PVC, okay, that's it. Oh, right here, I'm sorry.
Says it right there.
Yes.
First sentence.
You can get a vinyl that doesn't reflect headlights.
And it looks consistent with the country setting. It doesn't look like...
Rigid PVC, what is it, a polymer compound, shiny stuff. Modified for cold weather impact, potential high level of titanium dioxide, pigment, pigment. Throughout the entire extrusion for long-term ultraviolet light resistance. So would resist the fading, right? Well, that dulling that happens in almost everything.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I have a friend who has throughout his property, and I thought it was wood, and maybe not it wasn't, but it...
Where's fencing going again?
In different areas along the road, which you have to set up. I'll just second show you.
Fencing on the entrance there?
Yes, but it's right here. It's hard to see. And then there's a little piece there. And I thought there was one other place. There was some...
Mike's ready to catch it.
Yeah. This is not...
Be helpful.
I thought there was one other area in the back. It might just be here. It's just in the front, proposed entrances. This is where you're gonna have it. So you're gonna have the sign in the middle, and then the two areas here will have fencing. For some reason, I thought there was also fence in the back, but there isn't.
You know, after seeing these renditions, it occurs to me, do you have protection from the, you know, for the homes, from the golf balls?
Um, there...
When you're talking about fencing, that's why I brought it up, whether it be netting or additional eye protection.
No, there isn't. And we think anyways...
Are you using a shatterproof glass or something?
What's that?
Shatterproof glass.
We're not, but if you, if you look at the layout... If you look at the layout of the course, this is the seventh green, and it's now, it's a shorter par three, so the shot gets a little easier. And we've got quite a distance between the back of the green and the building. No one, I'm not gonna say no one, but it would be very unusual for someone to hit these homes on the fly, so we don't think that, you know...
You haven't seen me quick, though.
No, I realize the par three, I agree. I was looking, is that the ninth?
It really is a long one.
No, is it the ninth that was more problematic, the ninth?
On the bottom?
Yeah.
The one right at the bottom, yeah.
This guy here?
Yeah. Because that's a par five, a long four.
It's a long four.
Yeah.
This is a kind of a form of ownership.
We've had, we had the golf, the golf course designer look at it, and I mean, it's not... I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that it's never gonna happen, because it's going to happen, but we think that, you know, there, the houses are placed at a safe distance.
And the consultant would verify that with you?
Right.
Like, I mean, you have to go to Wentworth by the Sea or something, or something, that's houses all along, is that accurate?
Yeah, Thompson Club or...
Thompson Club, the Vern Croft Ipswich.
Ball's still at the home.
I've done it. I have done it.
I have, yeah.
I mean, and also, there are obviously...
But this is not a situation where you're in the middle of a fairway from a drive, which is where it usually happens. From the tee box, someone slices it off. When it's an approach shot, normally, they're not, they're not that long.
Because the guy isn't, because of what they're using.
That's right. And the one hole that's, that the homes are, in the vicinity of a drive is a short, shorter par three, so again, it would be a very bad shot to...
All right. So the answer is no fencing, that's all.
That's correct.
That's the question. I didn't want to hear whether...
No fencing in those areas, no. And as I had said before, we are looking for two waivers. That one waiver is to be permitted to not have that equal percentage of wetlands. And the reason we're seeking that waiver is because we feel as though we're honoring the intent of the bylaw, because we do provide, even taking out all the wetlands, 75% open space, not even considering any wetland on either of them. In addition, we are looking to have a setback from the street, from, I shouldn't say the street line, but from the driveway of only 20 feet from these people's entranceway in order to provide people with larger backyards, because we thought it would be better to bring people forward in a cluster format and then maintain a distant backyard and have something wider. So we are requesting a waiver, because I believe under your requirements, you have a 25-foot from the front of any kind of a driveway or an approach. So we're seeking a waiver to be able to have just 20 feet. And basically, that's a complete overview, a very simplistic overview of the OSRD. Rich can go through, you know, the stormwater, he can go through some of the more engineering details with you, or if you have questions regarding...
What's the length of the cul-de-sac?
Fifteen, okay. I had it written down. It was one of them was 15...
Hang on, tell you something.
Yeah, so we have two of them. This one comes out, and the other one goes down. I'd written it down to Rich in here. Oops.
Pardon me.
Boy, we're a little...
It's tight. Jill, I had a question on your actual application.
Please.
Can I answer the question as we walk?
The longer cul-de-sac is 1,300 to the end, and the shorter is 350 from the intersection.
Well, so you'll need a waiver for that.
It's not a roadway, so...
But our special permit rules incorporate our subdivision rules, so we would consider it something without to be waived.
Okay.
And are you relocating the, I forget what, the seventh green and the eighth tee?
Yeah.
Is that being, are those being relocated to a previously undisturbed area?
Yes, they most certainly are.
So you will need a waiver for that as well.
No, well, we're moving into an undis, no, I apologize. We're moving into an already disturbed area.
Okay, right.
Yes, I apologize. It is moved to a area that is already disturbed.
All right. So you'll need three waivers.
So just three waivers we need then. Length of road, the 20 feet, and the wetland.
At this point?
Yes.
I think the cul-de-sac is very odd. I mean, it curves all the way around and back towards the road and almost connects with the road. Why doesn't it connect with the road? I mean, that seems very strange to me.
You're talking about this?
No, the long one.
Rich, the long one.
I mean, a 1,500-foot cul-de-sac is a long cul-de-sac. You can easily eliminate the cul-de-sac.
You're right. It could be eliminated. Isn't it?
I put in my rotten head, and I have the first house next, next to it. The reason, the reason that the prior developer wasn't opening that is that there's about 20 children in that area right there, those houses. Also, the road curves right there, you cannot see if I pay...
Yeah, feel free.
If you're coming down here, you can't see them. In front of my driveway right here, there's been six accidents in two years. People come from the golf courses. You wanna call, they go around there, they don't see anybody there. So if you check with the police, police department on the last plant was there.
So you're saying there would be a site distance issue at that point?
There would be.
Isn't the cul-de-sac rule, Dave Jake, was primarily for life safety situations and fire?
Exactly.
Well, that's the basic reason for...
For the shorter distance on it. But they have, it looks like a service road for the...
It's also for good traffic circulation as well. It's not purely a safety issue.
I can understand his...
No, I wasn't aware of it.
The curve is right there.
They just... And sir, could you please write? I have to write, so click, or write or say your name.
Ryan Gagnon.
Thank you.
257 Dodge.
Thank you.
And if I may, that's one more question. This house here, this here, it's 40 feet from my Manhattan, like, right? The last plan by Leakey, there were like, first house was 150 feet. We're now talking 50 feet from my house.
Did you verify that?
Yeah, it's 150. There's no, there's no homes closer than 150 feet to another home on this plan.
Well, the previous meeting told me, I was here.
We moved the house.
But that's what we...
We moved that house out.
Yeah, we wanted to accommodate your request.
150 feet, that's fine.
Yeah. No, we...
Can you point that out just so we can see?
Yeah. This house is 150 feet from...
Okay, from any, any part of his structure to that house.
That's correct.
It's fine.
But let me, let me answer Mr. Pierce's question regarding the alignment. Although I'll agree, it almost makes it to the street, we... We didn't think that it was, was a real benefit to have a looped road. It just provides, you know, another access point onto Dodge Road. And Mr. Gagnon is correct, at that location, there is a site distance issue, so you have to bring it back further this way. And we didn't think that there was enough of a benefit. We have, however, provided an emergency access road so that if there were an emergency, that the site could be accessed. We've also, and one of the reasons that dead ends are discouraged is because water lines are encouraged not to be long dead ends, and we've provided a looped main so that the water comes in, loops through the road, back onto Dodge Street, so there's a, there is a loop there, and a short dead end here, so it's only three hundred and fifty feet of the dead end main, which is, that and the safety are, in my understanding, the reason that those dead end rules are put in place. And I think that we've accomplished...
We've mitigated them.
Mitigation for those issues.
What was that? Well, I think, I mean, I wasn't aware that there was a site distance, so it's probably something that the board would have to consider, and I would ask maybe if Larry could take a look at that one?
I will. Yeah, he's here. Yeah, Larry Graham is our technical review agent, who is here as well.
I mean, I think generally, we would have a preference for roads to connect rather than to form long cul-de-sacs, but if that, if you're creating a site distance issue by doing that, I would agree that that's, you might not want to do that. But, you know, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, the other thing, it's a, it's a community and, like, all the mail operations are upfront here, so people are going to use, this is going to be the, the main entrance to the site. It's all going to be landscaped and, and it's, you know, it's like a causeway. When you come in there... And I think from an aesthetic standpoint, it would be much preferable to have the one entrance rather than, than have, than have the two, but...
Essentially, it is, it is a condominium, so it's all going to be self-maintained too, so there won't be any street plowing, all trash pickups on site.
So it's a private room with an association, Joe?
Yes, it most certainly is. So we'll have, because of that, we're going to have mail structure, so you go here, you pick up your mail, you drop off your mail, it'll all be in this area here. And again, we'll do all the, you know, the association will be formed and we'll have a service contract to collect all of the trash as well as the plow.
Just, just kind of a detailed question on this. Since the golf course is intended to continue to operate, you put non-applicable for, because there's a pro shop, and I know it's a very minor food service, right? Snacks or whatever, but there are some materials for purchase in the pro shop, I imagine, right? So you're having absolutely no truck delivery schedule, N A. I don't expect substantial, but N A means it's not even existing, and some is going to exist, for sure. So it shouldn't be N A, it should be accurately picked.
Yeah, that's, that's my response. I had done that because it was an existing condition, and the residential won't have any. I meant it more for...
And, yeah, I, I know you meant residential, but that's not, this is not just for the residential. And in addition, since it is a golf course, we ask for a list or an addendum or something, you know, what a typical golf course would use for basically chemicals, you know? Any toxic or hazardous material. This golf course has had a shed, you know, which we know.
Yeah.
And in that shed is actually, they've actually had some toxic materials to be cleaned up in that shed to run that, in that golf course. Has been, it's been run fairly decently, you know, over the years, and it's not, and golf courses certainly have at their disposal much better, you know, array of chemicals to use, if they choose to use them. But it has to be manifest in N A, I don't think it's an N A as well. Well, that's definitely not, it's a requirement of our, of our bylaw. Yeah, so I'm just going to address chemical uses. Yeah, so, list of all toxic and or hazardous materials restored on site.
We can definitely supplement it, again, out of the subdivision, that was my...
And those are the two that kind of stood out to me.
No, I'll definitely address them in separate the application.
And you're going to determine trash pickup. Are there any collective dumpsters?
No, there are not. It's all, it's all, it's all curbside traditional pickup, as a normal home would be.
What would they use for trash dumpster for the golf course? Because there's a lot of trash every day.
On the golf course? I didn't know that. I asked, and they didn't tell me there was one.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you identify yourself?
I'm Maureen McDonald.
I'm sorry?
Maureen McDonald from Bennett Hill Road.
But what, what is your address?
There's trash containers around the golf...
What is your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, sixty-seven Bennett Hill Road.
Thank you.
Um, there's trash containers around the course. There's two or three by the clubhouse. Those are emptied every day, and there's barrels up on the deck.
So they're barrels, not dumpsters? I often...
Well, they take, though, they, the maintenance picks them up and brings them to the dumpster. So you do have a lot of trash there every day.
And just so everyone here who's in a butter, who are interested parties, Larry Graham from H L Graham Associates, the technical review agent, has been engaged by the applicants to do a thorough technical review of the project, and will be, in a subsequent meeting to this, will be making recommendations and along the lines, and that's one, and also incorporating into your comments and his thoughts.
Has that been a tra- traffic study done yet? Could you tell me the month, day, and time the traffic study was done?
What kind of traffic study did you do? Just vehicle count or...
We did, we ran from the previous traffic study, because there really hasn't been appreciable change from two thousand and six, and we had a supplemental done by M D M, who includes there, and then...
That's in the package.
Yes, it absolutely is.
I have concerns about the traffic on that road. I travel that road a lot, I go to the country club a lot, I come in Weathersfield, Dean Hills, or Dodge Road. And ninety percent of the time, there's always somebody on that road jogging, walking, pushing a baby carriage. But after three o'clock or in the summertime, you have got groups of children on bikes and skateboards. They come up to the clubhouse to buy their candy and soda. I don't think their parents want them to go up to skips because of, like, one thirty-three. But then I've come upon somebody riding a horse. So I, and I think that's a, some of the traffic drives too fast. Now, if they widen the road, they're going to go faster, and I have great concerns, especially for the people out there, the children.
Well, I don't think we're talking about widening any roads.
Okay, so I'm straightening the road, adding traffic.
Right.
No.
I mean, I agree with you on that point, though.
Lots of people on that road.
Yeah, and we'll take this, it's all into consideration, but it's not going to be solved this evening, actually.
Right, I just want to bring it to your attention.
We're taking a list, you know, we need to like accumulate the input.
As far as the traffic report goes, it actually shows that there's really no appreciable difference, because we're eliminating the restaurant, which is a seventy-seven-seat restaurant. So what it shows is really, you know, you'll see that it's kind of like an offset. I mean, during peak hours, when you have homeowners coming in and out, there'll be a slight increase, but not demonstrable at all. And that is detailed in the application. And then on a Saturday evening or Saturday afternoon, when you're going to, when you have a high influx of people as a result of restaurants, it actually, you know, it is lessened, because you don't have the restaurant there anymore, and the homes don't have that kind of frequency as the restaurant would. So in effect, they're, it's, it's, it's not appreciable.
And the clubhouse is serving, I think you said before, sandwiches maybe, but it's not, it's not a full restaurant.
It doesn't, well, right now, it doesn't serve anything right now.
Oh, I'm talking about the future.
In the future, we'll, we'll come and seek to, yeah, do something a little bit more, maybe like the deck, outside use the deck, so when people golf, people won't come in from outside to go to a restaurant, it'll be more to service the people who are playing golf, so they'll come in and sit on the, the deck after, I guess it's called the nineteenth hole, right? So that kind of thing.
So will be a restaurant.
No, you come in and maybe grab a sandwich and something to drink, but it won't be a full-service restaurant at all, no.
Right, and they're only going to be open during golf course.
Seasonal only. So it's only when the golf course is open, will they be open?
Are you going to serve alcohol beverages?
If they get a license, I suppose they could, but they don't have one. They have to apply for one.
They're not taking the license from?
No, they cannot, because that goes...
With the owner?
The, the person who owned the actual restaurant has that.
And they would have to go into the town?
Absolutely, you'd have to, right, you'd have to...
Well, you're going to, you're going to show us the, and what's the, the square footage of the clubhouse?
It's not changing at all.
It's not changing also?
Same footprint.
Yeah, same exact footprint.
Richard, do you have a presentation to make? Because I'm going to keep this to... Do you, so go ahead.
Yeah. Come through a lot of this, actually. So the water system I described, the, the septic and sewer system is proposed to be a gravity sewer that services all of the structures and...
When we go to the digital with the TV and the computer, I'll be...
Won't that be good? Well, I'll have a laugh.
Thank you. So the sewer system's designed to be a, a gravity sewer system, which, which discharges to, to pumps that are located here, which is, this is, these are the, the units on the, on the roadside of the proposed driveway. Discharges to these pump units and then ultimately gets pumped up in a pressure distribution system up to this location here, which is shown. Just here, this is the entrance, and the septic system will be located there. That is roughly the location that the septic system was designed in the prior plan, so we had all that testing available to size that system. The system is actually a little bit bigger, not because there are more units, but because they're not age-restricted, and the age-restricted units allow you to have a lower flow per, per unit. These are not age-restricted, again, so it's designed based on the number of bedrooms. And we're, we're going to be just below ten thousand gallons with this design. The, the drainage system is, on the roadway, a country drainage style design, so there aren't, there isn't curving and catch basins, it's pavement and shoulders, and we've got... We've got it designed so that the flow from basically the interior and this loop roadway is directed to this stormwater system here, which is kind of in the middle of the site. Some of the flow comes from this cul-de-sac into a treatment area, down a grass swale. Some of it comes into a grass swale and then a treatment area, then infiltration, we have multiple infiltration areas. And then this central area, which is shown as in blue here, is a wetland-type treatment facility. And in the, in the existing condition, this area is low, and that's where all the flow goes, is, and we're mimicking that, although we're adding impervious area, we're adding some areas on the proposed plan to encourage infiltration. We also have from this pond an emergency overflow, so when the pond builds up, this will discharge, and that discharge point is between the first and the ninth hole. There's an area of trees in there. So in larger storm events, like, it's, it's close to the hundred, somewhere between the ten and the hundred, probably, the twenty-five-year storm, we anticipate that this pond would fill up enough to discharge here, but...
So it's just a pipe with cleanouts along the way, right?
That's correct.
And it's gravity?
Gravity.
Yeah, because it goes down there anyway.
What we didn't want to have was a situation where you had homes around here and you had some huge storm, and this, this area has no outlet, it would be a problem, so we incorporated an outlet into that. And we analyzed the, the system, or the, the drainage at the edge of the, the wetland system.
All your construction is outside of the buffer zone, is that correct?
All our construction is outside the buffer. We analyzed...
Should be a coincidence.
Huh?
It's a coincidence.
Shocking. Although, it really worked out that way because, because of the golf course. It wasn't anything that we upfront said, we can't have work in the buffer zone, but really, that is the way that worked out. And our design analyzed the flow to this wetland system so that we wouldn't impact people that are downstream from that system. We've got actually a slight reduction in rate of runoff to those in the, in all of our storms. And the system is designed to meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy and, and Raleigh's rules as well.
I just wanted to...
I think, you know, technically, that's as far as I, I think we need to go tonight. I know that Mr. Graham is going to review the plan.
Well, I, I just want to make a comment, and I said this before, I, I don't think this is a very creative design at all, and I think it's still, you may have come down on the number of units, what you were originally proposing. I think it's still a very dense development. I mean, basically, what you've done, you, you have this, this building envelope that's not the country club, and you've, you've filled it with homes, and it really doesn't look like an OSRD to me when you look at the, the location of the houses. And I think it would benefit by a further reduction in units.
I see something tangential to what you're saying.
True.
Yeah, but I, you know, the, the purpose of the OSRD is to concentrate development and leave open space and, and...
I just want to, yeah, exactly, so I'm just going to segue into that. Isn't the intent of open space in the OSRDs I see, and there's some mono OSRDs in this town, what is it? One, I think, was it Meadows?
Wild pasture?
Wild pasture, so I was going Meadows, it's perhaps same thing. That, this is a, this is a golf course, and it is open to the public, it is open space, but it's not really not, it's, it's open space that is maintained as some upland, but a lot of it's maintained by man for, as a golf course. And I'm kind of comparing, you know how it was before, that was the open space, and was being deemed restricted and going back with plans to bring it back to a more natural environment. But my concern is that, how does the public, there's no places where the public can use it? Open space in a, in a subdivision is for the use of people that have it, for their, you know, the people that buy there. The open space is a golf course, that's assuming that everybody can walk around there who plays golf. Well, we'll be open to the public, right?
Yeah, so it has to be.
Well, how? But I don't see any provisions for that, I mean, I...
Oh, it did in the, in our application, it's a...
No, I know that, but they have to pay to get in and play golf. You're not going to walk around a golf course.
But that isn't...
Both of us know that golf course, and go bird watching.
No, I mean, but that isn't the point. I guess the intent behind your OSRD was to also provide various types of open space, and some are recreational, and that's what this particular one is.
It's a rhetorical question, I'm just...
Well, that, that is the point.
There is a particular section of your, of this bylaw that talks about golf course, so I would think that it was anticipated and that it was required that the area be larger, and I assume that's because it's, it's a golf course and not...
That's, that's exactly right. So while you can't, we'll be able to just wander...
Um, so while you can't, we'll be able to just wander around bird watching. If you, if you play golf, you'll be able to use, you, use the facility.
For offseason.
For offseason, oh, that's true too, or, or cross-country skiing.
And it's definitely a particular position, I think, applies that, but I, I just disagree and I think, you know, that you're paying, you're paying to use open space, that's all.
But David's point is good, so during the winter or offseason it could be used for cross-country skiing by the public?
Right, we don't know that. We, we don't know that.
Right, right.
We don't, we don't know that, yeah, yeah.
For anybody to, to use it.
Say who you are, please, and where you live.
John Gorman, uh, 246 Dodge Road.
Thank you.
Uh, for anybody to use the golf course, they have to call up and book a tee time and pay a fee. I mean, it's not something that I can walk across the street and wander around and look at the birds and commune with nature or anybody else that owns something in there. They're not going to be able to go out on the golf course, even the children that live there, unless they pay a fee, show up with golf clubs and, and play golf.
I think that's right, while the, the country club is open, but during the offseason, I think we can make a provision that it be open to the public for activities such as lands, uh, cross-country skiing.
You have to be very, very, I, I have to tell you that I can't, I can't say that that should be the case because you can destroy a golf course and the green can be $60,000 to $70,000 to replace. And if you have children running around out there, they will destroy. I, I love kids, I have some of my own, but they are not kind to golf courses and they're exceptionally expensive.
Kernwood people are sledding and I don't know how they do it, but they have...
You can have areas to sled?
Yeah, they have, they have an area with...
But you have to be very, I don't know.
You have to confuse to allow, uh, cross-country skiing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have enough snow.
Yeah, when there's enough snow, you can, you can allow it, but the, the second that there's any kind of bald spots, you, you risk exceptionally expensive damage. I mean, again, I think maybe, I, I don't...
I'm just bringing it up to digest and just...
And it, I, I mean, I would say that, you know, it, the OSRD, there must have been some rationale to permit the golf course usage, I mean, it must be something the community desires to maintain and it does preserve the vista, some people love it.
That's part of it and it, uh, it does preserve open space and that, but that's why we increased the requirement from 50% to 75%.
No, golf courses have been proven depending on what, how they're used, you're right, as open space, a quality of space for...
Yeah.
I, I've been looking at the state, uh, open states residential development and they don't mention anything about golf courses. Is this something unique to the town of Raleigh?
Well, no, it's not unique, I mean, a lot of towns, these things have been approved in a lot of places, uh, but we, we do have a, a provision in our bylaw which allows, uh, basically what they're proposing, uh, to have...
Under, under, under the OS?
To have, to have, to have the fairgrounds and the tees and everything associated with the golf course basically count towards the open space requirement. So it is something that, that the town voted for, uh, to allow and I think there is a lot of, uh, feeling in the town that they would like the country club to stay open, um, and that's, that's why...
I thought what the town voted for was that residential property could be turned into a golf course.
No, um, our, our bylaw would allow either one, either a brand-new OSRD country club or, uh, the preservation of the existing one, at Carriage Pines.
Well, usually the open space is either deeded over to the town or deeded over to the Audubon Society or the people that own, uh, units in...
No, the bylaw, uh, in our, in the case of our bylaw, um, the open space has to be held by a separate corporation. Is that right, Joe? I haven't looked at that in a while.
It is.
Uh, but it has to be, uh, perpetually used as open space, which means, and I hope the, uh, the applicant understands this, uh, and the condominium units, units owners would understand this too, that if the country club were ever to close at some time, uh, that that open space requirement would still exist and that, that land, that entire 75% would have to remain open.
The entire golf course and it's actually 85% and that all has to be, we, and it's in our, it's in our, um...
Okay, it's scripted, you remember?
It absolutely is.
And I think if we get to the point where we're going to approve this, I think we will need to make sure that, uh, we have the legal document that's, that, that spells, uh, spells all this out and that it's enforceable. And I would even suggest at this point that we get town council involved in that because I think it is a tricky, uh, you know, legal thing.
I'll take, we'll take the...
But that's down, that's down the road.
No, it is, because we, we do recognize the perpetual...
I want to follow up on your first...
Okay, can I just say something first about, when we talk about the intent of OSRDs? If, if you look at all the OSRDs that have been approved in this town, and I think it's generally true with those that are approved elsewhere, is that while, uh, while the lots are small and the houses are close together, they all back up, each house backs up on open space. So basically, when someone looks at their backyard, they're not just seeing, you know, a very small area, they're seeing a lot of woods and trees, uh, behind them.
Of cordism, such.
Right, and that's not true with, with this design, especially with those, those, uh, three, it looks like three units in the middle that are surrounded by other homes. So, um, that right there is not consistent with, with OSRD design, I believe.
Was it like that in the, in the prior one that was approved? I don't think that they all backed up to open space.
Well, you have, it was a much larger area, I don't know, I'd have to look at it, it was a much, it was a much larger area. It was 54 units, but it was a much larger area.
They're going up that hill.
And I, I think I can say that the, what we approved does not have the same density that, that you're asking for here.
No, I know, but I, my point, I, I was just responding to your point that, you know, the intent was to have all, all the units back up to open space. Most of these units do back up to open areas. Every, every one of these lots is open to this open area. All of these lots, except for these two, all back up to...
The open.
The open space. So, uh, you know, for the most part, we are...
It's debatable.
Following up on Cliff's statement, I find that the density looks hard, the way it's arranged here and although there are variables in the plans here, the, not in the plans, but in the appearance of these structures, the plans don't have any variables in them. And the duplexes are stamped along here and there could be more variability and before the end of this is approved, I want to see how the facades are adjusted and where, I, I don't see where the twos and the threes and the ones are on each individual plant, so...
That's going to happen, I mean, at some point.
It's going to happen and maybe this can be done so that there's enough variability in here. I think people who buy want some variability even if the floor plan is virtually the same. You can slide, I'm an architect, so you can slide the, the duplexes front and back a little bit and it may change roof lines and stuff like that, but, um, square footages seem okay and the parking, to me, seems okay at this stage, but...
At this stage. I just want to, so that Gene or Mike, because it's been called...
I, I kind of agree, it's dense.
Okay, so we've established that point for the, for the, Mike?
Yeah, I have no comments at this point.
But, well, okay, so it's still, I just want to make sure the Board of Health, uh, at this, again, preliminary lead, had some input, just, so I just want to read their memo. Dated April 23rd, um, the Board of Health has reviewed the provided application of plans. The Board of Health has not received a proposed septic system for review that adequately addresses the proposal. Currently, an approved design for an over 55 residential development with 54 units is on file with the Board of Health. Proposed plan with this application is for more than the approval on file. Just, I'm reading it. Proposed floor plans for two and three-bedroom dwellings, F-provided, may not be the state Title V definition of bedroom. Please contact the Board of Health with any questions under, reading the market. And again, that's obviously not the exhaustive input, uh, just as far as input, police department, fire department is, will be reviewing for our next meeting and whether I get input from them, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to hear what Larry...
That's right, it's an excellent, yeah.
I have one more comment too.
I did.
I think that in this approval process, you've got the engineer, you've got the lawyer, you need the architect here. I don't, well, so we need to, to these ups and...
No, there's a lot of input.
I agree with you.
Oh, okay, because they, if they hear it secondhand, it gets lack of translation sometimes and the last one we approved, we had finally got the architect.
Right, it helps to have you, our architect, talking to their architect.
We have a special language.
I also have, um, someone, another...
Hi, Katrina Larry, 54 Wilson Park Lane, I just have a couple of questions. Um, first is, is there any way that any space could be set aside off the golf course for trails that could connect in the future to all the land behind the golf course that is probably going to be developed in the next 20 years? So that we could possibly have a connection from Huntsley Hills through Eris Park up towards the Girl Scout camp in the future? And, and you have to think of these things before it's even useful at this point, but, um, I think it'd be good to think about it now.
I, I agree with you, I think we should think about that, I don't know how feasible it is because...
Just a trail.
But, you know, I think we should think about it.
Well, it's sound planning, it's what we try to do.
It is, it is, it's just with the golf course, I don't know how you, you, people can't walk because it's dangerous when people are actually in play.
Why don't you just, you know, why don't you just think about it?
You're taking into consideration, I don't want to digress into what I said.
Okay, I know you wanted us to respond.
Do you have other questions, go ahead?
Yes, um, second thing is just the garages. You know, some of the streets, I think, look like a neighborhood of garages. And is there any way to maybe stack them so that one garage is entered from the front, one is entered from the side? It would mimic a single-family home more. Um, most of those facades are most garages, they, you know, there's, it's, it's like, it, more than 50% garages. Um, and that was just a comment. Um, another one is I, I didn't look closely at the plan, is the rock wall staying along, um, Dodge Road?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Except, of course, where we're entering.
All right.
And lastly, before I, I, I will get final comments from anybody who took the time, thank you for coming. Uh, our technical review agent, Larry Graham?
Yeah, um, I really don't want to throw out the questions I have tonight, I've, I've made a lot of, you know, notes tonight to, to look for in the plans, which I'm sure I will find a lot of the questions answered there. I unfortunately just found out that the technical review fee had been paid about three or four weeks ago, I just found that out Monday, so I have not started looking at this yet, so...
And Ms. Mann has been informed by me, yeah, we've been on, yeah, she's aware of that. The applicants are aware of that as well.
And I talked to the engineers, to, to Rich Williams about this yesterday, so... Try to make up the loss of the couple of weeks if I can, subject to my work scheduling.
Sure.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other butters have any, uh, questions, concerns, uh, for the record? And obviously feel free, we're going to the next meeting.
Uh, I'm less than a mill, I'm 204 Dodge, so I'm the farm across the street. Uh, just on a personal level, I'm a little concerned with, you know, we have horses right on that road. Um, right now it's pretty much cars going by, a few walkers going by, I'm a little concerned with kids coming over, standing on the fence, horses getting out, we haven't had any horses out, except for gates we left open. Um, not being, you know, our fences are kind of old, um, you know, just a safety issue. Um, you know, it's going to be very tempting for kids to go over there, across the road and into the, into the farm. Um, so I, I guess I'm a little concerned about the, you know, that it's going to be kids. That's just a, a personal comment.
That's fine, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I have a problem with the children, that this is going to, there's going to be a lot of children there because it's not age-restricted. People that are 55 or over are going to go someplace else because they don't want to be where there's a lot of children. Now, the children won't be able to use the open space in this development because it's a golf course. That to me doesn't make sense, it doesn't sound like an open space residential development to me, if that's the case.
Well, they'd be really small children, I mean, I've seen some pretty young people, like, play, play golf.
Yeah, but you'd have to play golf to use the open space if you're living in an open space residential development?
That was a point that was brought up this evening.
Well, you know, the, the town did make a choice, we, we approved an amendment that allows the concept, so...
And, and probably because the town has had this resource, this country club, for many, many years, many years.
Right.
And, um, that was the only way we could possibly retain it, if the situation came up.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, um, old Newbury Golf Course on Route 1 in Newbury's been open to the public for use during the offseason for both cross-country skiing and sledding for, as long as I've been here, 30 years, with no, no constraints or restrictions that I know of, you know, and there's been no visible damage that I could see. You know, maybe it would be something further down the road we could, you know, talk about or make some kind of provisions, but otherwise I'd like to maybe see a big playground in the middle of all this thing for the kids, you know? Younger kids to get out and take out some energies versus going out onto the golf course or across to the horse paddocks and getting into trouble.
That's an interesting point you make because there is a, my Ipswich, I went to some meetings in Ipswich that had a 40B, a fairly dense development. And they actually, that was one that, they actually, uh, made provisions for a place for those kids to...
Well, there's, there's a huge area for the septic system, uh, which is going to be just a field, you know? It would be lawn-like and it is, it's a big area, so, you know, there are places for, um, for kids to play out there, uh, you know, not in the street or someone else's property or in the golf course, there will be, you know...
Like the opposite course around the vents, the Presby vents is a...
They'd love that.
All right, are there any questions, I'm going to continue this to the 16th of May? Is that all right with the board? I think I emailed Cliff and David, I emailed you about this, Mr. Jaquen? That's the intent to it, but I'm just getting him, uh...
We may have a board of directors meeting, but it's supposed to be Tuesday.
Uh, is there a time that's better, earlier than, like, later?
Tuesdays, but, excellent.
Let's see, that'll go on...
17th is my birthday, so...
I think we have a town council meeting on, on that Tuesday.
I think we do too.
I don't care if it's Tuesday.
Well, I can't, but I...
I know, I'm saying, but I mean, theoretically, I would...
I mean, I would really like to have David here because he's...
Why do I want everyone here?
Well...
In this, in this development, I want, I want all members to be here, so we can continue on the...
Don't know until I call tomorrow what is the, our meeting's...
They'll meet up tomorrow, so it's 16th or 30th, so...
Okay, as long as we say that we're going to continue to the 16th, we'll just continue to a date certain.
Have a motion to continue the hearing to a date to be determined.
You, you can't do that, you have to do it, now it has to be a date certain.
I know, we always have a date certain, you don't know, but...
30th is, okay. Isn't that Memorial Day or something like that?
What about the, uh, what about the, the, the next Wednesday after the 16th?
Night.
23rd?
23rd. Probably good.
22nd?
23rd or...
Oh, he's grabbing it?
From college, so... 30th, does that work? Who gives Larry a chance to get really into it?
I don't want to give Larry too much time.
All right, Larry, how about next Wednesday?
Next, oh, there you go.
Larry, you got till next Wednesday, everybody?
Okay, I'm doing a bad one.
Is the 30th okay with everyone?
30th, I'll make...
That is after Memorial Day.
Yeah, it's on Wednesday, right after.
Yes, I want David to be here as well. All right, 30th is a Wednesday at 7:30.
I'll move to continue, I'm sorry, Chris.
Is, is that the meaning at which you would want the architect or is it more appropriate to handle the questions from Mr. Graham and then have it, the architect at the next?
Sure, we'll let you know.
You want, you, absolutely, you want...
Well, there's issues and Katrina had the same, one of the problems, the issues too, which is all these garage doors facing the street, et cetera. And where the units are, where are the threes, twos and ones and there's got to be a, there will be a plan that will show the variability of those elevations before approval.
So then perhaps the best thing, if it, if it's okay with the board, is to wait for the architect until the meeting after the 30th?
That's fine, and also, they'll be working with Mr. Graham and he will be a congo technical review agent and we're in constant contact with him and David can be as well, I would rather have David, you know, give it to Larry and David and put the stuff from Larry. All right, just keep it.
We worked through this on Main Street, which was not quite the same approval, no.
All right. All right, we continue... All right, we continue the hearing. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
If that's the case, we may not have to. I want to, please, attention, please. I need a motion to continue the public hearing for John and Karen Gorman and the fore. Larry, when do you think, should we do that, thirtieth or sixteenth?
I haven't heard it, dang, it's four weeks away.
Well, continue again, I'll say sixteenth or something.
Yeah, and then sixteen.
Can I have a motion?
Are we meeting for something else on the sixteenth?
Yes, we are.
That means I gotta be here. Accuse myself.
Oh. You do need to accuse yourself.
Yeah, there's.
And I think, but, we'll deal with that, I just want to get, okay, I need a motion to continue the public hearing for John and Karen Gorman, one oh three eight. From site plan special permit application for the sixteenth at eight-thirty. These guys are already.
What's at seven?
Carriage fund? Oh, we have eight, no. Seven-thirty is maybe earned, then I can do more than that.
Eighteen, ten minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to depress people a little, so.
I was trying.
If someone doesn't show up, we're not sitting here twiddling our thumbs.
No, no, seven-thirty is when they're coming, and that's an application approval of special. Special permit, that's a little, that's some complications.
Seven forty-five or?
I think you'll have some notes behind you.
They're gonna need a half an hour.
I can agenda.
All right. Eight o'clock then?
Eight, eight. All right, the Gorman's at eight o'clock on the sixteenth.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, motion made by Chris Garrett, second.
Second.
Second by David Jakewood, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so the Gorman's are postponed until sixteenth at eight o'clock.
Are they supposed to be here today?
Well, no, it's just that we're still waiting, Larry Graham's still waiting for some information. This will go quickly, the other business is Sheena Estates, I received an email from John Keelty, the original lawyer that dealt with Sheena Estates, Gerzak Lee, off of one thirty-three. Larry nicely went out with Scott Levitt to come up with a list, didn't really affix values to it, but there is a substantial amount of money in the escrow account, and so the bottom line is that I am waiting to hear from Mr. Pelitch, who stated by Mr. Keelty that he would be contacting me to give a schedule for when we'd meet with either Larry and Scott, to work out a schedule to do it, and whether or not that could be done and a price, so it'd be done with what's left over, is twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So I don't know whether that's enough to finish it or not, our consulting engineer thinks it might be close. Pretty tight, huh?
Yeah, we eliminated very, very many things that Scott had originally, we'd like to have done, we eliminate those things because there's not gonna be enough funds to do.
So, but the main thing is that we're gonna continue the process, at some point, at some time, if I don't receive Joe Pelitch, again, we haven't heard anything in, what, since two thousand and four, so if this continues, I mean, I think we need to start the process for the fall town meeting, it's just not fair to the residents.
Right, no, we shouldn't give him too much.
Keelty, found him and all, or?
Yes, he did get in contact with him, and then immediately got in contact with me, but that was two weeks ago, so here we are, so.
And you said Pelitch would be calling him?
Yes, and I, and I also let the W Egan of the selectmen know, so they, so again, if this does not occur, they need to step up, we need to do, it's not something they would like to do.
Give him very long.
Okay, thanks, that's right. The other one, is it okay, I need a vote to, can I engage Larry, just to kind of get some feedback, and so I can wrap up some loose ends like this, the planning board regarding Pingree Farm OSRD, that memo I sent out, just so we can get some feedback to the water board?
You want to engage Larry for that?
Yeah. Please let me know your thoughts on this, and when the board feels comfortable modifying the permit. The modification would have to be voted at a regular scheduled meeting of the board and reported at the rest. And again, this is so, you know, for egress, as you know, as, there's gonna be a lot going on down that road in the coming years, for construction and monitoring of the town water treatment plant, and that's, so. The two special per, I might as well, Water Department trustees of Pingree Farm Condominium Trust are currently negotiating access easement and agreement that would permit the widening of the western access to Pingree Farm Lane in return for the Water Department taking over the ongoing monitoring of four groundwater wells, which is obviously in their best interest going forward. The attorney representing the trust is concerned that there are two special permits that have language requiring the trust to monitor sample and test the monitoring wells independent of any agreement that may be entered into by the trust and the Water Department. The two special permits, the Board of Selectment soils permit and the Planning Board OSRD permit would need to be modified, so that it's clear that the Water Department, not the trust, would be responsible for ongoing testing. For instance, the following suggested modification of Planning Board OSRD, people can, well, OSRD special permit approval conditions, Pingree Farms, Abel Street Pingree Farm of Raleigh, Mass, issued on April eighteenth, two thousand and three, recorded at book two-one-three-two-five, page five-four-one, shall be modified by the insertion of a provision directing the monitoring, reporting, sampling, and testing of the groundwater monitoring wells shall be conducted by the Town of Raleigh Water Department, no longer the responsibility of the applicant, now the Pingree Farms Condominium Trust. That's the current one, right? So that condition number fourteen reads as follows, and so you get the, and then you can read that. And the special permit conditions concerning the groundwater monitoring wells are inconsistent, and I request that William Nuttery at Weston and Sampson and John Resum, he's of the Water Department Director, I guess, provides some direction as to the number of wells, the location of the wells, the frequency of testing, the testing parameters. So, again, feel obligated against this, something I'd like to follow up, so we just simply have to write that up and without.
So, but we're only modifying it to.
Insert this simple word by Judy Pickens.
To say that the Raleigh Water Department will be solely responsible for groundwater testing. Can we just approve, I mean, is there any reason why we need further consideration of this, or?
Don't we need a piece of paper, and so record a new one?
Huh?
Don't we have to record the modified one?
Well, but I think, isn't Judy asking us whether we'd be agreeable to this?
I think she's suggesting a modified special permit.
At a meeting.
Whether the board feels comfortable modifying the permit, I guess, I mean, I don't know.
You worked with her a lot over the ten years, you tell me.
Well, please let me know your thoughts, and whether the board feels comfortable modifying the permit, I mean, Larry, do you have an opinion on this?
Well, I do, because also there is apparently that inconsistency between the groundwater monitoring, which I wrote up for them, and what the Water Department is going to do or wants to do as advised by Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
So that should be struck as well. What we have in our special permit was one of these two exhibits, GRW, W is what I recall, and they should be taken out, and just say that they no longer apply in whatever the Water Department puts in there for monitoring, frequency, and so forth.
Oh, should be from the special permit.
So you need to, you know, you need to extract that out of there as well, so I would say.
I want, yeah, we have the money.
Well, I mean, can you draft that modification?
Yeah, yeah, I've been in touch with them already, to do that, that's why I bring it up in the meeting, but I can't spend money unless I get a vote.
No, okay, I wasn't clear what you were saying.
Yeah.
Who will monitor, I mean, where will these results be for monitoring of the Water Department? If the Water Department takes over the monitoring of the wells, who will be receiving the results, just the?
That's a great question, will it be public, yeah, how's the public can access that, that's right.
It should be public.
Well, it's a public record, I would think.
Well, you see, I haven't seen, it's a lot of monitoring wells around town, and I've never, you know, down at the intersection, down at.
Isn't the Water Department subject to the public records a lot?
I think so, I'd have to go to the Water Department.
Yeah, so you just request it, and they should be, they should give it to you.
Yeah, I don't think it's voluntarily, like, offered to the public, you'd have to go for a specific situation.
Right, you get a passport.
Well, because they have an administrator, a new person there now, isn't Laura there?
Laura is there.
So she would be the person that you could go ask for.
Right, right, I have a conduit, now you have a contact person now, right?
And she's one of them.
I mean, I don't have a problem with switching over to the Water Department, I just want to be sure that the results are still public, particularly for people who live in that area.
It's a great point.
I would assume they are, but, you know.
And Larry, can you call the new administrator at the Water and get some info on that? She's a contact person now, you'll actually reach someone who could help you, what's her name?
Laura Hamilton, I can, I can do that, and also, when I write this up, I can, I think you could drop, drop it right in there, that the records that the Water Department are going to receive, or are going to have, should be public.
I think Jean makes a great point.
Because how do we know? I mean.
Who wants to make a motion?
To what?
Have Larry.
Oh, I'd like to move to allow Larry to draft the.
You want to put cap on it, on the project? Do you have any, I mean, or subject to, next, next, by next Wednesday, when we do Parker River Certificate of Vote, quick vote, Larry will maybe have some chance to give me a number, and we can vote on it then, do you want, or do you care?
I don't know.
I don't care, I don't either, I just want to get.
It's not gonna be that much.
I want to get.
I don't put a number on, but I don't.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just asking the board, I want to do what the board wants.
We've done with Larry long enough that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, so you can get back to Judy Pickens.
I understand the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Anyone else make motions besides you?
You want that on the sixteenth?
Yeah, I used to do, but now.
Second is David, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I thought it was Mike's job, I don't know. I could have something to do around there.
Don't even go there. Now, there's another one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Well, I don't know, have you looked at this, Larry, I need, the situation, did you look at this memo from the assessors, please, you have it in your.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
It's very complicated, this Abu Zahr thing.
Yeah, and it's questions, questions, they're looking.
I'm the only one who's, I was around at the tail end, Jean, Jean was around a little, probably afterwards.
Yeah, but you and I are like.
I think.
Can I get a little background?
We're going to have a town planner fairly soon, I assume, right? Assuming it.
Yes, yeah.
Well, why don't we let the town planner draft the response?
And do the research that is required.
It's gonna, I don't know the answer to those questions, it's gonna take some research.
And I have spoken to the assessor, and that's exactly what I told him.
Oh, okay.
I spoke to Mr. McFadden. The situation is this, these parcels and off of Wilkes Road, as you know, the subdivision goes back over twenty years, right? Totally, right, for twenty?
I don't know.
It goes back a long way, because I was on the Conservation Commission at the time. There's some orphaned, small parcels that Mr. Abu Zahr requested abatements on, the assessor denied it, and if the assessors are following up, we're just doing, we're just helping them out if the process goes any further. I mean, they have their own arguments and so forth, but these are small, some of them had to do with open space, some had to do with unbuildable, some had to do.
Which was the open space parcel that he, that he offered to the town, or so he said?
This one in the back. I think some of the ones along Kinghouse Road, yeah.
I can't remember why, I vaguely remember him making that offer, but I can't remember why the town would have said no.
Some in Cindy Lane that are but the adjacent property, some have been, some that are here that are asking for, have now, since this memo was written, have been sold, so that kind of. All right, so you have the memo, read it, it's great stuff. I'll leave it at that, but I just feel as though we need to do our, make our best effort to work with the assessors if they need some kind of.
Yeah, but it, you know, it's gonna take.
If they need some, yeah, they need some researched memo from us.
And none of us really have the time to do that kind of research.
Can I just insert that, if you need the engineer for this, it's Cammott.
Did you get this, this is a color?
It's Fred Ford, Cammott, because he, he went through all that.
That was the original design, the original drawing of the plans?
Well, originally, it was.
I forget, I should know from Concon.
Bob, Bob.
Was it Hayes engineering?
I think Rich was involved at one point.
It was Hayes engineering, huh?
He was the engineer, they were the engineer.
All right, so.
Bob was the original engineer, and then, and then Bob, when Bob left, it was Fred Ford.
It's ancient history.
All right, make sure April thirtieth, at the town meeting, simply a line item of the budget, that is what a portion of the planner, for to hire a planner, after that is approved at town meeting for restructuring. The finance, the FinCom Finance Committee has approved our budget, again, it's just, I'll get up and simply reiterate that the town was, two thousand, had thought of hiring a planner, and now we're just trying to follow through with what, and now with all the development, what's going on, I think a professional town planner could assist us in the complex issues, you know.
Absolutely. Well, there's some legal issues that come up that really need to be protected.
Or they can take the initiative on a couple of issues, that need to be addressed.
And timing wise, you know, obviously the fiscal year for the town ends July third, June thirtieth, and so we could implement our new budget by July first and.
Right, we also have four zoning, four zoning articles at town meeting, which I'm gonna propose.
I got the short speech, thirty seconds, and he gets.
But I have, I'm gonna draft up a planning board report, it's a requirement of the statute, it's just a bare bones thing about when we held a public hearing, but I'll draft it up for your signature.
That's fine.
Since you're the chairman, and you can sign it Monday.
Oh, for the hearings, right, right, because you have to report.
It's really bare bones, but.
And, and those public hearings, there was, nobody came.
Well, really.
Well, committee members, but not citizens.
There's another interesting planning issue that will be before the town meeting, and that is the Raleigh Farm.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's cool, yeah, that's cool.
And using CPC money.
That's really a neat thing.
Everybody I know of is in favor of it, but you just never know.
And, you know, some towns are trying to retract, you know, from the, you know.
CPC.
CPC, and.
We're just lucky we have it.
I don't know, it's, over the years, you know, we went in early, I was actually one of the ones at Concon that really pushed that, in the paper and pushed it, and I'm glad we got it in then, because that's when it was a one-to-one match with the state, and that's gone down, since we were in early, we got some good matches. Lastly, Mr. Graham, I'm, I'll be working with, on bills payable, so I would just, I will email people, let people know that that's on the desk, and please sign it as soon as it's prepared, so we can catch up on some back bills that have come to my attention. Okay, so just make sure you do come and sign those, so I can get them in, there's only, there's about a seven to ten day wait after you get them in before they actually cut checks, so I'll be working on that Friday morning in the office.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Assuming the town planner article passes on Monday, how soon are we gonna, how soon will it be before we start doing interviews?
First, we'll advertise it.
Huh? Advertise, but.
Right away, we'll advertise it.
Right away.
That's what I think. That's the plan.
Right, okay.
Thank you for that question, right, the plan is to advertise that right away, and so potentially to give somebody time if they were to leave their job, the four weeks if they had to, in other words, to get the hiring done by June first.
Yeah.
That's the plan, okay.
Presently, we have nobody covering the office, unless you come in.
I'm coming in, but it's not, it's just statutorily and making sure I respond. I'm coming in, but it's not, it's just statutorily and making sure I respond to people who have issues.
It'd be July first, right?
What?
Can't start the planner until July.
No, that's what I'm saying, when the new fiscal year starts, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, any other questions, otherwise, adjourned?
I have a question. Ice, ice cream shop, am I gonna be involved in that? I have no application plans or anything.
Uh, well, that's another one I was gonna say. This is not, I've gone through this a lot with the, you know, I.
It's a change of view.
I thi, I think Larry should just look at it, but it's not a real complicated thing. You know, but I think you should look at it, but I, I don't, at this point, I don't.
Are they changing the site plan at all?
No, it's the same footprints, tiny.
Right, so it's just a change.
Can we pay Larry? I mean, again, we have this budget. We pay, can we pay you to look at it?
It's difficult for you to say to me just to look at it. I either have to do it or not do it.
No, do it, I meant do it, at our expense, yeah, at our expense.
Yeah.
I'm not promoting, I.
I can, I can be instructed to, you know, you know, try to keep it simple, but, or this is a one you really need to focus on, or.
I would like to give you the, some feedback and look it over. I'll give it to you right now, tonight.
If Larry's involved, he can do the decision too, which would, would help you or help us in this time of.
That's why I want him, that's why I was gonna say. But I do not wanna charge the applicant on this one for the scope of the project, right? I don't wanna get into that kind of, uh.
I believe there's a site plan available, although I have not seen it.
It is, I have it in the office.
John Mayor of Moore.
Yeah, John Moore has done a survey, uh, site plan, uh, architectural stamp, so, um, I've worked with them because the landlord has not been that helpful, and she has definitely, uh, gone from point A to point C. She's gone through the process according to our rules and regs. Is that okay? I mean, what, yeah.
Yeah, is there, is there a package?
I have it for you. I'll give it to you right now. Uh, thank you, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, 'cause I would've forgotten that one. That's all I have, I think.
Should be about the second intermission, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion, adjourned?
Yes.
I'll second.
Oh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Good night.
Bye, next meeting.